Welcome to the Board of Supervisors, order to join me in the flag, please. I am the President of the United States of America and the Republic of America. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow.
Here.
Mr. Harrington.
Here.
Mr. Merrihue.
Here.
Mr. Gardner has been excused. Mr. Depot?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Monti has been excused. Mr. McNally?
Here.
Mr. Scovavala?
Here.
Mr. Miga?
Here.
Mr. Pleady?
Here.
Mr. Moore?
Here.
Mr. Marnell?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Whitson?
Here.
Mr. Tyler has been excused. Mr. Goyland?
Here.
And Mr. Preston has been excused.
Thank you. Before we start, I would like everybody, if you have not heard, our Chairman is undergoing at this very minute urgent and significant surgery in northern Vermont. I ask everybody to keep Randy Preston, his wife Michelle, and the entire Preston family in your hearts and in your thoughts and your prayers. Today is a great day for Town of Minerva as it celebrates its bicentennial. To the former Supervisors and members of Town of Minerva, we're going to pause our deliberations today to join in this celebration. Minerva must be proud of, and one of the great achievements is its history. I have before me two history books, which I have not had a chance to read yet. And a third evidently, as I was told, is in the making on the bicentennial. So at this time, I would ask our County Manager to read the designating law.
Welcome, everyone. It's nice to see so many people from Minerva. You know, contrary to what people believe, Minerva is not Warren County. It's actually in Essex County. We sometimes had that issue. The law regarding splitting the town of Scrune into two towns was passed back in March 7th in 1817. And it read as follows. "Being enacted by the people of the State of New York, represented in Senate and Assembly, that all parts of the Town of Scrune in the County of Essex, beginning at the point of the south line of the County of Essex, six miles west of the western shore of Scrune Lake, form hence outwardly, parallel with the west line of said county to the north line of the Town of Scrune. Thence westerly on the north line of the Town of Scrune, to the northwest corner of said town, form thence southerly on the west line to the County of Essex, to the place of beginning, shall be and is hereby erected into a separate town by the name of Minerva. And that the first town meeting shall be held at the dwelling house of Nathaniel West, and that the first town meeting be held at the schoolhouse in the school district number four in said town of Scrune. And be it further enacted, that as soon as may be after the first town meeting, the Supervisors and overseers of the poor of the said town respectively, unnoticed being given for that purpose, shall meet together and divide the money and or belongings to the said town of Scrune and Minerva, previous to the division thereof, agreeable to the last tax list, and that each of the said towns shall forever thereafter respectively maintain and support their own court." So that was the law passed in March 7th, 1817.
Thank you very much. I'd like to recognize the Honorable Stephen McAllie Supervisor of the Town of Minerva.
Hey, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, I'd like to introduce the following groups. We have former Supervisors Dan Palmer here today, Joe Kelly, Mike McSweeney, and Sue Montgomery-Cory. Also... We also have members from the Historical Society with Heidi Kelly, the President, here today. I would like to introduce Teresa Brandon-Haley, the Town Historian from the Town of Minerva, and have her say a few words. Please.
Good morning, and thank you for celebrating the bicentennial of the Town of Minerva. My name is Teresa Brandon-Haley, and I'm the Historian for the town. Minerva is located in the southwest corner of Essex County, with a current population of about 800. More than half of its property is owned by the State of New York. We are conveniently between Newcombe, Gore Mountain, North Creek, and Scrune Lake, and are nine miles from I-87. We have a beautiful lake, numerous hiking and recreational trails, a school, a museum, churches, two post offices, two family-owned and operated stores, eateries, bed and breakfast, canoe-making companies, an auto repair garage, and a few other independent businesses. We still have an active volunteer fire and rescue squad, as well as a very active youth commission that creates year-round events and programs for the young citizens. Like the surrounding Adirondack towns, we are home to many summer and/or hunting camps and vacation homes, with a growing population of retired couples who have chosen to make Minerva their home. Our current Town Council is busy with projects that promote the town and the well-being of its resources and citizens. I grew up in this town, graduated from Minerva Central in '85, and went to college. After graduating, I worked as a contract archaeologist in the States along the eastern coast, as well as Iowa and Texas. Working as an archaeologist gives one a different perspective on history. When you uncover an artifact or a pattern of post holes in the ground, you see the actual item at hand. You have the tangible evidence of the past. Working as a historian is sometimes the reverse. You often have stories and hope to find the proof so that these stories can be shared and passed on accurately. Minerva's history is an interesting one, but some stories are still unclear. One example is how we got our name. One story is that our first Supervisor, Land Surveyor A.P. Morris, named the town after the Roman goddess of wisdom. Another story is that during the first meeting at the town, it was decided the name would be after the first woman walking by. The third is that A.P. Morris decided to knock on the door of the first house he got to and ask of the wife's name and use that name. Another mystery for Minerva is the birthplace of Solomon Northrop. Solomon Northrop was a free black man born in New York but captured and sold into slavery. Mr. Northrop wrote his life in the book Twelve Years a Slave. He states in this book that he was born in Minerva, Essex County, New York, in the month of July, 1808. We wish we could learn where this family lived during their time in Minerva. There are some stories that we can be sure of. We know Native Americans, at the least, traveled in the area because of the projectile points found in town. We understand the West family that came to Minerva in about 1800 was the first family to settle here. Some descendants of this family are still living in town today. Minerva can be associated with a few well-known individuals. Painter Winston Homer stayed at Northwoods Club and used local guides as models for some of his works. The writers John Burroughs and Jeanne Robert Oster spent time in Minerva. Theodore Roosevelt's historic ride from Tahoz to North Creek was due to the teamwork of men like Mike Cronin of Aiden Lair. The lumberman, folk singer Yankee John Galusha, and educator Ella Frances Lynch lived in Minerva, as did Assemblyman Wesley Barnes. Wesley Barnes championed the bill which created the Forest Commission in 1885, and was also the last Civil War veteran of Essex County. Another Civil War veteran that lived in and is buried in Irish Town, a hamlet of Minerva, is William Byrne. William Byrne was a private in the 16th Cavalry. He, along with 24 others, including Elizabeth Townes, Emery Parity, and Franklin McDaniels, helped capture John Waltz Booth. All of the men involved in this capture were said to have received $1,653.85, which is a lot of money in 1865. Minerva was home for the well-known Supervisor Francis Donnelly, whose chair is now here after being donated by David McNally. Minerva is also home to our current County Manager, Dan Palmer. Although Minerva has some unsolved mysteries, it was and is home to many wonderful and gifted people. The tanneries are gone, but sustainable logging and tourism are still viable sources of income. The construction of the Adirondack Northway had its influence. Local small businesses might have been hurt by the shortened and more frequent trips to larger shopping areas like Glensfells. However, quicker emergency trips to the north to the hospital are seen as a positive result of the highway that helped put Minerva into the 20th century. The people of Minerva still show no hesitation when it comes to helping a neighbor. We value our beautiful lands and heritage, and are proud to be celebrating our 200 years. Thank you for sharing this with us.
Could I have all the current and former Supervisors of Minerva join me up here, please? It's a great day, and glad to have some of the people who have been instrumental in making the history of Minerva joining us up here today. From the resolution, congratulations to the Town of Minerva on the occasion of the bicentennial. Whereas on March 7th, 1817, the New York State Legislature created the Town of Minerva by an act to divide the Town of Scrune into two towns, and whereas from 1817 through 1915, the Town of Minerva boundaries changed several times through land exchanges with the Town of Newcombe, Scrune, and Indian Lake. And whereas, named for the Roman goddess of wisdom, Minerva has enjoyed 200 years of being a town, and whereas from Minerva's founder Ebenezer West, American Revolutionary War soldier, his five sons to today's community, Minerva has worked hard to make a living, provide education for its youth, and care for the elderly and downtrodden. And whereas the combination of natural beauty and mountains, rivers and ponds, and the man-made beauty of Minerva Lake and Donnelly Beach has made Minerva a destination for many to relax, enjoy the resources, and become part of the ever-giving town. And whereas, Newcombe through Minerva to North Creek, President Roosevelt, Theodore Roosevelt traveled upon learning the death of his predecessor, President William McKinley. And whereas, known for its excellent school, the Fighting Irish, to its churches, community center, fire department, and excellent restaurants and diners, the Town of Minerva has shown over and over its dedication to its people. And whereas, from A.P. Morris, the first Supervisor, to Francis Donnelly, the nation's longest-serving Supervisor, to present Supervisor Stephen McNally, Minerva has a long history of leaders who have served the town well on the county and state level. Now therefore, be it resolved that Essex County Board of Supervisors, along with the Clerk of the Board, County Manager, and County Attorney, congratulate the Town of Minerva on the occasion of the bicentennial of its founding. And be it further resolved that Essex County Board of Supervisor acknowledged the accomplishments of the Town of Minerva through the 200 years. And be it further resolved that Essex County Board of Supervisor proudly declares that the Town of Minerva is our shining green emerald in the crown that is Essex County. Signed, Randy Preston, Chairman, Essex County Board of Supervisors.
I'd just like to acknowledge and mention that, Minerva, we're going to be celebrating this all year. We've had a few small events, and we'll have a large event on the 4th of July weekend that goes along with our Minerva Day celebration. But what I failed to mention earlier is all the planning that's been going on for these events. And we have some of the members of the Bicentennial Committee here today with us, and I'd like to acknowledge that Nancy Shaw is our Chairperson, and there's a few others here. I don't want to miss any names that came up today. So, you know, if you'd like to come to Minerva, we're going to have a couple celebrations this year, and you're more than welcome. We'd love to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll say a very modest, not to thank Judy and Deena for their work and cooperation together. Thank you very much. And Mr. Bravantia, thank you, sir. We take about a 34-minute recess. Mr. McAllie can... Thank you constituents for coming. We'll start with... We have no further guests this morning, so we will move directly into resolutions.
Resolution number 67, authorizing budget amendments for various departments.
Move by Mr. Morrow, second. By Mr. Miga. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Okay, resolution number 68...
Resolution number 68 was defeated at ways and means, so we'll need a resolution, or I'll need a resolution to withdraw.
We really don't need a resolution to withdraw. It's undefeated. It just wasn't defeated, never made it to the...
I didn't think it was supposed to be it.
Okay, so wait. If it does not require, we'll move on to resolution number 69.
Resolution 69, congratulations and appreciation to Dr. Richard McKiever upon his retirement from service with Essex County Public Health Department.
Move by Mr. Merrihue, second.
Resolution number 70, adopting and approving the Public Health Medical Director Policy Procedures Review by the Public Health Advisory Council.
Move by Mr. Marnell, second by Mr. Depot. All in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Resolution number 71, authorizing the Public Health Department to accept round three engagement funds from Adirondack Health Institute through delivery system reform incentive payment in the amount of $33,235.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell? Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused, and the resolution carries. Resolution number 72, authorizing the Public Health Department to accept round three engagement funds from Adirondack Health Institute through data mine PM survey in the amount of $3,457.22.
Move by Mr. Miga, second. Uh, Mr. Depot. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number 73, appointments to boards, committees, and/or councils.
Move by Mr. Miga, second by Mr. Marnell. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And I, vote?
Resolution number 74, urging New York State to fully fund probation departments and other impacted county departments and agencies with 100% funding for costs associated with raising the age of criminal responsibility to 18 years of age.
Move by Mr. Moore?
Second.
Second?
Resolution number 75, authorizing the purchasing agent to award bids and issue contracts or purchase orders in the Department of Public Works, and further authorizing the Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Merrihue, second by Mr. Depot. Discussion?
I do need an amendment to this, number five, we received this morning. London has a right to get additional pricing for some of these required clarifications. Tracy Road Equipment actually provided the price of $124,012, which is less than $127,000. So we're asking you to amend this to substitute Tracy Road Equipment for...
Move on to amendment, Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Marnell. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Vote? Now to the motion as amended. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell? Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
And Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries as amended. Resolution number 76, authorizing a contract amendment with Schroeder Rivers Associates for Engineering Services as it relates to a bridge replacement project on Hamilton Road Bridge over Putnam Creek in the Town of Crown Point, in the amount of $8,600 from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? Any non-roll call, please?
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano? Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number 77, authorizing a contract amendment with Schroeder Rivers Associates for Engineering Services as it relates to a bridge replacement project on Amy Hill Road Bridge over Putnam Creek in the Town of Crown Point, in the amount of $8,600 from budgeted funds, and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second by Mr. Marnell. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number 78, authorizing issuance of a permit allowing the use of county roadways for the Town of Crown Point for a 10K race on May 27th, 2017.
Move by Mr. Harrington, second.
Second.
Second, thank you.
Resolution number 79, authorizing a contract amendment with Schroeder Rivers Associates for Conceptual Engineering Services as it relates to County Route 12, Wells Hill Road over Spruce, Millbrook, and the Town of Lewis, in the amount of $14,000 from FEMA reimbursement funds, and authorizing the County Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Morrow, second. By Mr. Merrihue, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number 80, setting the dates and locations for the 2017 Household Hazardous Waste Days.
Move by Mr. Scovavala, second. By Mr. Giordano. Discussion? Mr. Moore?
As far as the locations go, are we going with what was previously put out with Mariah, the last one? North Elba would be first, North Hudson second, Lewis third. How's that work?
I think that's what we intended, yeah. I see Jim shaking his head, so I'm okay with that.
Okay, thank you.
We'll discuss it.
So how are we going to set the dates for where? Jim's going to do that, or coordinate it? Did you just leave the room? No, I thought he was talking about... So this is the order you're going in? What Mr. Moore just said? Yeah, it was North Elba, Mariah. Mariah. North Hudson. Right. What's the Saturday the 2nd? Whatever you said. What'd you say? Did you leave the room? I must... Oh, my hearing. Go ahead. What I said was June 10th, North Elba, July 8th, North Hudson, August 26th, Lewis, and September 2nd, Mariah. Yes, that's it. Because Mariah was the last date we added, based upon the request.
Further discussion? Any non-all in favor?
Aye.
Vote?
Resolution number 81, authorizing the purchasing agent to award contract Greenman Patterson Incorporated for Engineering Design Services Phase 1 on the Shore Airport Road Project in an amount not to exceed $116,400 from budgeted funds, and further authorizing the Chairman or County Manager to execute the same.
Move by Mr. Giordano, second. Mr. Moore, discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrow?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yeah.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Scovavala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Whitson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number 82, authorizing the purchasing agent to go out to bid for kitchen equipment, site work, foundation, general construction, electric plumbing and heating as it relates to the nutrition building.
Move by Mr. Depot, second by Mr. Whitson. Discussion? Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Mr. Marnell?
Yeah, how are these kitchens designed? Do we have input from... Who do we have input from? What do we need? The type of equipment we're trying to... I'm pretty sure I know, but let me get the courtesy of the floor for Jim, so they can...
We need him over.
Move it. First for all in favor?
Aye.
We've been working closely with ACAP, who's our current vendor. We also, the process that we went through where we bid out the modular building, we were educated a lot on the types of equipment and new models and things, so we've been working with them and actually have determined the kitchen equipment ourselves. At one point, we were going to go out to bid specifically for a kitchen design consultant, but with the experts that we have at ACAP, who already know how to produce up to 1,000 meals a day, we felt we could work with that.
It's certain, I mean, I've seen a couple instances where they've equipped commercial kitchens that use cheaper, like the ranges versus a Garland range, which has been a resistance made the United States since the 30s, I guess. made in the United States for, since the thirties, I guess. Compared to the ones that imported and have judicialists that got them, nothing but, uh...
We're kinda lucky in that, um, Garland is actually under state contract right now for ranges. Um, and, uh, that's who our purchasing agent is. Our basis of design for the, for the ranges, for example, is the Garland models. There's a few different models, um, that are all going into this, but it's under state contract, so, um...
That's good.
We aren't, we aren't gonna risk getting a substitute that isn't quite right.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Skozbala, you call with gas or electric?
It's all propane gas.
Oh, propane, yeah. What do we do with the old equipment? Put it out auctions in a national? We gotta put a sign...
I have no...
We're gonna put a sign on it that says, "Tom, AK Three."
We're mounting it in the back of that bus you just got, Tom.
There you go.
Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. The resolution carries. Resolution number eighty-three, authorizing a contract amendment with Dante Engineering in an amount not to exceed seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents for geotechnical engineering services associated with the proposed nutrition building from budgeted funds, and authorizing the county chairman or county manager to execute the same.
Move by, Ms. Moro, second by Ms. Marnell. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. Resolution carries. Resolution number eighty-four, authorizing ragtime events to ramp Essex County Fairgrounds and Essex County Government Center parking lot as staging areas for the Ragna relay on September twenty-second and twenty-third, twenty-seventeen, and further authorizing to utilize county roads, Alexander Avenue in Taconaroba, Stowersville Road in Lewis, and River Road in North Elba, provided that they execute a permit and provide sufficient insurance coverage.
Move by, uh, Mr. Pleady, second.
Second.
Mr. Giordano, all in favor?
Aye.
Carries, thank you.
Resolution number eighty-five, accepting, adopting, and placing of fire policies, plans, procedures, annual reports.
Move by, Mr. Merrihue, second. And Mr. Miga. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Carries.
Resolution number eighty-six, designating April twenty-seventeen as National Donating Life Month.
Move by, Ms. Moro, second. Thank you.
Resolution number eighty-seven, of congratulations to the town of Minerva on occasion of their bicentennial.
Move by, Mr. McNally, second.
Resolution number eighty-eight, of condolence to the family of Norma D. Stella.
Move by, Mr. Marnell, second.
Resolution number eighty-nine, of condolence to the family of Frances E. Nels.
Move it. Move by, Mr. Skozbala.
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution number ninety, supporting New York State Senate Bill nineteen oh eight and New York State Assembly Bill three three ninety-seven, which would increase the county's share of Department of Motor Vehicles revenue to provide a more equitable share for counties.
Move by, Mr. Moore. Second by, Mr. Marnell. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Votes? Thank you.
Resolution number ninety-one, opposing the increase of New York State title fees from fifty dollars to seventy-five.
Move by, Mr. Merrihue, second by Mr. Miga. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number ninety-two, of congratulations to the Mariah Central School employees varsity basketball team for winning the twenty-seventeen New York State Public High School Athletic Association Section Seven, Class D State Championship.
Move by, Mr. Skozbala.
Second.
Thank you.
Resolution number ninety-three, authorizing the issuance of a permit allowing the use of county roadways for the Wilmington Whiteface One Hundred K Mountain Bike Race on June third, twenty-seventeen.
Move by, Mr. Pleady.
Second.
You're on second, thank you.
Resolutions from the floor. Um, there's a copy of the last resolution from the floor. It would be number ninety-four, adopting local law number two of twenty-seventeen, which was proposed, local law number three of twenty-seventeen. Local law, mending local law number one of twenty-seventeen, entitled fixing the twenty-seventeen salaries of county officers who are elected or who are appointed for a fixed term, and increasing the salary of the director of the community resources for the twenty-seventeen fiscal year from sixty-four thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-three cents to seventy-four thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-three cents, which when added to the five thousand dollar salary for deputy county manager and two thousand dollar salary increase per recycling grant, equates to a total salary increase from seventy-one thousand, thirty dollars, fifty-three cents to eighty-one thousand, thirty dollars and fifty-three cents.
This, this motion is, is a contingent one upon further discussion during this, this, uh, these deliberations. So I would request a motion to table. Mr. Moore, second by, by Mr. Merrihue. All in favor of tabling the motion?
Aye.
Votes? Thank you.
That's all I have.
Motion from the floor, Mr. Moore.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move a resolution to appoint Commissioner of Department of Social Services based upon a recommendation of the DSS Interview Committee. We offer the name of John Michael Mascheranos for appointment to the vacant position of Commissioner of Department of Social Services at an annual salary of eight, seven thousand dollars.
Have twelve allowed on the floor?
Yes, you do.
Thank you. Second, Mr. McNally. Discussion? Eight, move, roll call, please.
Mr. Moro?
Yes.
Mr. Harrington?
Yes.
Mr. Merrihue?
Yes.
Mr. Gardner is excused. Mr. Depot?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Monti is excused. Mr. McNally?
Yes.
Mr. Skozbala?
Yes.
Mr. Miga?
Yes.
Mr. Pleady?
North Elba cast its five hundred and twenty votes in favor of Mr. Mascheranos.
Mr. Moore?
Five hundred and twenty-two.
Mr. Marnell?
Yes.
Mr. Woodson?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Tyler is excused. Mr. Goyland?
Yes.
Mr. Preston is excused. Resolution carries.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Mascheranos.[1479.88]